Recording.
Yes, it's working now.
Great. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. All right, so being six thirty on Wednesday, September twentieth, and having quorum, I'll go to item one and call the Bridgewater Planning Board to order. Item two and item three are public hearings.
Hello?
I'm Ms. Ross. So before the public hearings, I'll read the governor's notice in about remote meetings. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the provisions of the open meeting law. Pursuant to the governor's approval of a supplemental budget bill, temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law, excuse me, have been extended to March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Specifically, this further extension allows for the public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate and alternative access to remote meetings. The languages of this extension does not make any substantive changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty first, twenty twenty three to March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Members of the public are encouraged to participate remotely and shall address questions through the chair of the board. Mr. O'Brien is the host this evening. He'll be hosting the meeting. In addition, we just asked that when public members participate in a meeting, we ask that you state your name and address your record and you're clearly audible on the on the Zoom call. The following members of the Bridgewater Planning Board participating remotely this evening, Patrick Driscoll, the Chair, Mr. Raymond Ajemian, Mr. Michael McDonald, the Vice Chair, Mr. Stephen Geller, Ms. Asat Rojas, and the alternate member this evening, Ms. MJ Spagon. I don't see Mr. Haley with us yet, correct?
That's correct. I do not see Ted.
Okay, during the meeting, all votes will be taken through roll calls. I did ask all members participating in the in the public meeting if they do have the ability to turn on their camera, to please do so. And the Bridgewater, the following Bridgewater Town staff will be participating remotely this evening. Mr. Robert Ruly is our Community Economic Development Director, Mr. Shane O'Brien, our Town Planner, Ms. Tristi Jane, our Assistant Town Planner, Mr. Greg Tansey, our Town Engineer, and Mr. Stephen Solari, the Building Commissioner. Again, at this time, everyone's mics are muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting, and as items appear on the agenda, the project representatives' mics will be unmuted. If this is a public hearing, which I said we have two, and it allows for public comment, which will allow after the applicant presents and the board has time to ask questions, we'll then go to public comment. We ask that you either use the chat feature to ask your question or you can raise your hand or your virtual hand. The host of the chair will recognize the questions in order. You can also use the Raise My Hand feature in the in the participant menu. You'll be unmuted when the host or the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name, address, and your question or your comment. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. Okay, so that being said, we'll go back to item two. We have a continued public hearing. This is for Zero Corporate Drive, map eighty-three, lot eighty-five. This is a proposed hotel for the Claremont Bridgewater Two Hotel LLC Site Plan Review and Special Permit Approval pursuant to Section ten point six, Site Plan Approval, Section ten point five, Special Permits, and Section six, General Regulation, Section nine point four, Plan Development District, and Appendix Speed Table at Dimensional Requirements. We continued this from our last from our meeting on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. So the way I'd like to proceed tonight, we have a I'm going to ask Mr. Ruly for an update in regards to the nineteen eighty-eight special permit and the feedback we got from the town attorney and have him explain that a little bit. Secondly, we had a special permit withdrawal request sent to us by the applicant. I'd like to discuss and act on that and then move into the the public hearing presentation by the applicant. Then we'll ask for board questions to town staff and to the applicant, and then a little bit open up to public hearing. So I'll start the public hearing by turning it over to town staff, Mr. Ruly and Mr. O'Brien, if they can update us on the legal opinions from Mr. Attorney Rollins and, you know, where we are in regards to the special permit and if and why we believe this is not a substantial deviation from the nineteen eighty-eight special permit. So, Mr. Ruly, if you'd like to take that.
Sure, thank you. And I think Miss Spagon wanted to comment. I'm sure she, I think, wants on the record that she needs to recuse herself from, but I won't speak for her.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Ruly. Actually, that is correct per Massachusetts general law. As there may be a potential conflict of interest, I must recuse myself for this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Spagon. We'll get ahold of you and let you know when you can get back. And Mr. Ruly?
Yep, so the, we did ask Attorney Rollins to look at the special permit. In his opinion, the nineteen eighty-eight special permit is still in effect. Nothing that is being presented as part of this application is a significant deviation. The language in nineteen eighty-eight, you know, can assume that there was going to be economic changes that would happen as time went on. You know, there's been questions raised with respect to something with not being done within two years. Since that special permit was granted, there's been two apartment buildings, two office buildings, a hotel, and a, you know, commercial building that have been constructed. So I think, you know, we've satisfied that that is not applicable. So, and, you know, unfortunately, there was some protocol that was not necessarily correct in that every time that the applicant came forward, in addition to a site plan review that they needed to file for a special permit. That wasn't required. If, in fact, what they were proposing was allowed as part of the special permit or what were allowable uses going forward under the Plan Development District. So this should be considered solely as a site plan review. That is the opinion of the town attorney. And that is why I believe you have a request from the applicant for a withdrawal of the special permit associated with the site plan review.
So, Mr. Ruly, just to be clear, so site plan review and compliance with the nineteen eighty-eight special permit, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so do we have any board questions or comments for Mr. Ruly at this point before we go on to the next segment?
Was there ever a, oops, sorry.
I'd just like to make one comment, sure. I don't doubt what Mr. Ruly said is correct. I mean, that the special permit is still in effect. I think in the future that when we get rulings from the council from that, with that being writing to the board and not through somebody else.
So. And as I shared, Mr. Chair, if I may, I shared with Mr. Ajemian today and you know, based on the advice of council, any written opinion that is required from this board or any board needs to not go through staff. It needs to go through the town manager's office. You know, to the extent that, you know, there is ever potential for litigation and the fact that, you know, the proper procedures may or may not have been filed correctly through previous applications. The town council is not going to issue an opinion that's going to put the town at risk. But just as as a process going forward, if this board or any board commission is looking for something in writing from the town attorney, that needs to be requested through the manager's office, not through staff.
That's fine. I'm just saying, I think we do need written opinions in the future.
Mr. Ajemian, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Mr. McDonald?
Was there ever any follow-up review on the Aquifer Protection District, I believe it's called? It said it was mentioned.
So, Mr. McDonald, can we, I, I, that's one of my questions.
I see. Okay, yep.
Can we address that as part of the site review? I'm just trying to deal with the special permit piece of this now.
Right.
And then, and then we can go into the Aqua Protection District and drainage and all that stuff in in the meeting, if that's okay?
Yep, of course.
Do we have any other questions in regards to the special permit for Mr. Ruly? Okay. So, Mr. O'Brien, I don't know if you want to put it up on the screen or if we just want to mention it. We did receive a piece of correspondence from Attorney Brennan in his office requesting withdrawal of the special permit for this project, correct?
Sorry, I was unmuted. Yes, that's correct. I'm bringing it up right now. But I think we can also see if the applicant has anything to say about this withdrawal as well.
Sure, Attorney Brennan?
Yeah, yeah, you, no, you have my letter, Mr. Driscoll. I think it's consistent with the opinion of town council. And I would ask that the board act upon our request by the letter dated August twenty eighth of twenty-three.
Yeah, thank you, Attorney Brennan. Has everybody seen on the board the request to drop the special permit specifically for the hotel? And we're going to be focusing on the nineteen eighty-eight special permit. Are there any questions in regards to that, or does everybody understand what we're doing? Okay, so we have a request. Do we have a motion?
Actually, I, I do have a bit of a question for Mr. Ruly. I'm just, how would, I've never known developers to purposely take a harder path in getting things approved. Do we have any idea why these were initially, all these projects were initially being submitted as special permits? Do we know how that started in the first place?
I don't. Mr. Lovett is here, but I wasn't here. Mr. O'Brien wasn't here and it might have been out of an abundance of caution, but it wasn't necessary. There might have been one application that did require a special permit, but and that might have been perceived to be what the precedent should be going forward. But that was never what the intention or requirements of the nineteen eighty-eight special permit were.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we've, excuse me, we have a request from Attorney Brennan on behalf of his client to withdraw the special permit. Do we have any further discussion or a motion on the item?
I'll make the motion, withdraw.
Make a motion to accept the withdrawal?
Yes.
By Mr. Ajemian? Do we have a second?
A second.
By Mr. Geller? Is there any further discussion on this? If not, I'll take the roll. Mr. Ajemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on. At this point, I'll turn it over to the applicant for any new information that they would like to share or update us on on the project. And then we can go to board comments and questions. So Attorney Brennan or somebody from your team, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board. I have a brief update for the group. First, thank you with regard to the withdrawal of the special permit request. And if we have, since our last meeting, we have responded to the August nineteenth letter from Town Engineering, the Technical Review Letter. The responses went back to the town engineer on September thirteenth for for review. And we're looking forward to any comments that come from that or from those revisions. The the primary point of the revisions or the updated responses was to demonstrate the test, test pit data that had been in, asked for at the last hearing or in the last review letter, pardon me, as well as answer some questions on with regard to watershed drainage evaluations and general detail, updates on details. The those are the primary updates from the last hearing or from the last meeting. As a reminder, we have regraded and revised the drainage plan and the the layout for the project with regard to the stone chamber in the parking lot and in the drainage area of the proposed hotel. And we've also added street trees along the entryway to the hotel. So those are really the the primary updates with regard to this application.
Okay, so do we have any? So I can start with board questions. I have a few. I, I, I know we received a lot of good information from the applicant and a number of, a, a, a large number of public comments. And I, I read all of those except for a couple that we received today. And I have some comments based on both what the applicant proposed and the comments we received. So this is an engineering question, maybe for Mr. Tansey. Looking at the aquifer protection districts, it does, does the drainage now meet and does it meet the standards in the aquifer protection district and in section nine point two point six? In in evaluating the stormwater, did you evaluate it both from a stand, stormwater standpoint and that APD requirement, Mr. Tansey?
I did, and I did have some comments with the stormwater. And they responded to my comments. The, the response letter did not respond specifically to each and every one of my comments. I only got the latest revised plan a week ago. And I did not get a chance to thoroughly review the stormwater in in its entirety. One of the things that I do have to check, as mentioned earlier, is how it relates to the, the stormwater design relates to existing groundwater conditions. We did some test pits out there. The test pits that I witnessed, they looked pretty good. But I still, I, I did not get a chance to complete my review of the stormwater report and all of the issues with the, with the stormwater. So.
But, but just, but you are reviewing it both under our stormwater guidelines and Section nine point two point six under Aqua Protection, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Ruly? I know you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to remind the planning board that the approval on stormwater is the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission.
Okay, all right, thank you. My next question is more an engineering question as well. On the sidewalk, which I found to be beneficial, you know, there's quite an elevation changes. There's a hill, you know, it seemed like we were on a hill. Do we know how much of that site is going to be cut and filled? And is there a calculation as to how many yards will be coming off the site, if any, or will you be bringing material in? Maybe that's a question for Mr. Silva.
I can respond to that as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say that Bill may have more on the other cut and fill, maybe through Opechey, I'm not sure, but.
Sure, we've thank you, Larry. We've been working with the general contractor and the intent is to balance the site so that there would not be an import or an export of material from or onto or from the site. With the exception being there may be some structural fill that has to come in, you know, underneath the foundation slab or something to that effect or for utilities, but nothing, the intent is not to, and the plans that I've seen do not have a large import or export of material.
So those higher elevations, the intent is to keep that on site and to not truck it off, correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and I will say that the material that is on site is very good material. It, it borders on a sandy gravel. And it's, it's actually easier to, to move it around and not have a lot more disruption as it relates to that or having to take material out and bring replacement material in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Silva. My next question is in regards to the nineteen eighty-eight special permit. So, Mr. Lovett, how did you demonstrate to the town current water usage? I know that Mr. Ruly has reviewed some, some, I don't know if there were bills he submitted, and we determined that the usage was somewhere in the seventy thousands, if I recall. What, what was used to, what, what, what evidence was used to provide that? What, what did you use as evidence to determine that usage?
Sure, thank you for your question. We used actual water bills from our property management for each of the buildings.
Was that, was that a one quarter billing cycle? Or was that over several quarters or what was that?
We did it over four quarters. It was a twelve month, if my recollection, I can confirm this for you happily. But it was, it was over an extended period. I think it was over twelve months.
And one thought I had after talking to staff about this was later today. Was that, did that include the flex building that you, you folks sold and and what the potential usage may be there?
I believe it did because that one is, was fifty percent occupied. I can double check that. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it did.
So that includes the new flex building that is, is out back off Fruit Street that that was, I believe you guys sold that, correct?
We did, yes. I, I need to confirm that with, with you, Mr. Chairman. The we wouldn't have actual water bills from that at this point in time because we sold it. So I, I need to double check that. I mean, maybe if we included that piece or not.
Yeah, I just think that I, after discussing with them today, I thought about that building because that's no longer in your, in, under your control, correct?
Correct.
And I just didn't know what future water demands there would look like. And, and, you know, what, what percentage of the commercial space is unoccupied at this, at this point?
My understanding is fifty percent.
Was there any allocation in that water and sewer capacity calculation for those? You know, once those are fitted out in terms of tenants and whatnot, or was that not calculated in?
I need to verify how that calculation and if we included that. I, I just don't recall at the top of my head, but I'll find it.
Okay, and I know Mr. Ruly's looking at comment. Mr. Ruly, go ahead, sir.
We looked at historic bills, so the analysis we did included the flex building because we looked at bills from last year. You know, we started looking at this in February or March, I think, when there was a suggestion that this application was going to go forward. So in our initial calculations, the flex building is included. You know, I can tell you that flex buildings are probably the least amount of water in sewer based on the use accurate that, you know, if the office building is, is, you know, fifty percent occupied, that that number is going to change a little bit. The highest use of water in sewer is going to be from the two residential buildings and from the hotel property. You know, I, I think I've mentioned this previously and I'll say it again. Under the nineteen eighty-eight special permit, the applicant is limited to a hundred thousand gallons a day of water withdrawal and a hundred thousand gallons a day of wastewater discharge. I, based on our calculations, if this project was approved, it would be difficult for any new project to come forward and not exceed what those allocations are. But at the present time, they are not over the hundred thousand. This project will not put them under a hundred thousand, but I don't see any way that anything additional is not going to put them over the hundred thousand. And to Mr. Jamien's point and your point earlier, Mr. Driscoll, those are conditions of the nineteen eighty-eight special permit.
And I know just just to, you know, I, I think we all trust what you're saying, but just to verify it, we don't want to give out water bills because they have account numbers and sensitive information on that. But is there a way for us, you know, between now and the next meeting to get a summary? Whether it's in a spreadsheet or something from the water department, as the water usage per property, just in the total to this point?
Sure, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll tell you that our analysis was done on information given to us from the water department. We did not rely on what the applicant gave us. We requested that information independently of them and did our own calculation. Just so people know, you know, converting how the water department calculates fees to how we would look at it is difficult because they do it in cubic yards. And there's a different formula, so it's not based in gallons. It's based in cubic yards, but.
Cubic, cubic feet.
Yeah, cubic feet. So, but, you know, wastewater, we don't meter wastewater. We assume that anything going into a building is coming out of the building somehow, some way into the sanitary sewer system. So I'm happy to, you know, I'll talk to council. I mean, I, I think that if we were to share that information with you, it might have to be an executive session. But just to document that it was independently, I mean, again, we did not rely on information that the applicant gave us. We did our own independent analysis.
And I think, I think it doesn't have to, we don't, again, we don't need account numbers and things as we discussed earlier today. I, I think, though, maybe a, a, a letter from the water department saying, hey, you know, the total usage for all properties and one of the PD is on average X. I mean, that's something as simple as that, you know?
Sure.
And if, Mr. Chairman, I had one, one additional point of clarity. When we calculated the, the the hotel in the application, the, we use the numbers or the actual numbers from the Extended Stay Hotel. So those numbers, we anticipate would be higher because there's kitchenettes, et cetera. So we, we believe that those numbers should be a little on the conservative side for the proposed hotel.
Okay, all right, two more hopefully quick ones. So just going back, you know, trying to prepare for this meeting, the Chief Del Monte had raised some concerns and some residents had raised some concerns about the the number of calls and resources being used up there in terms of public safety disproportionate per capita to the rest of the town. And their ability to continue to respond. And we actually did a public records request, I believe, and that was forwarded to us with the, the number of calls going to those properties in the, in the Plan Development District. And I think another one was submitted with a with a public comment letter. So I, I know early on, we talked about public safety concerns and we talked about the disproportionate number of calls at those properties. Has there been any more thought by either the town staff or by the applicant in terms of mitigation for public safety at this point?
I, I can't answer for the applicant. I mean, I, I think that, you know, and I've had conversations with Chief Del Monte. He'll tell you that, you know, that they, they're concerned by the amount of calls they have for certain properties in Central Square. And I think you have to look at, you know, when you're looking at the number of calls, you have to look at the density of the number of units that you have there in contrast to, to other areas. You know, certainly, in any decision that this board makes with respect to mitigation requirements, you can condition that, but you know, I think that, you know, if we were comparing apples to apples for areas that had the same density of, of population, that it may or may not be more than what we see in some other areas. But I mean, I, I think, you know, again, that's the discretion of the planning board and your decision, if you were to approve this, you know, to make that a condition in terms of what you were looking for with respect to mitigation. But I, I would say that, you know, having a recommendation from either the Fire Chief, Police Chief or both, you know, in terms of what that should be would be appropriate.
I, I, I think also to Bob's point is that I think a typical condition that I place as well as a recommendation for my memorandums is that one, security cameras be placed on the, the side of the property as well as the, is part of the decision to allow, in the case of an incident, for our police department to access those cameras in case of any incidences. So I, I think, you know, the appropriate security cameras, you know, will hopefully, you know, deter crime. But I think allowance for police department to access when a crime occurs, I think, is beneficial.
All right, thank you. And just one last question for clarification. Mr. Lovett, it appears that that there is an offer being made for clearing mitigation on the site. Is that correct?
Hmm, yes.
And is that clearing, is that just because I'm confused and, and just reading the, the, the document, is that clearing mitigation tied to this site only or future sites as well on the property?
So looking at what was done, the seventy-five hundred dollars for the eleven acres on the the industrial parcel is the tree mitigation. This is looked at for the tree clearing for the the proposed, not just the hotel site, but the additional sites as well.
And that would be twenty-five thousand total, not per site, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I I get through my questions. I'm sorry it took so long, everyone. But if somebody else from the board would like to ask questions, now is the time.
Oh, I'll step in. Just go back to the mitigation. Still have it um seventy five hundred dollars for the flex billing was given to the town for trees and tree maintenance, correct? Are you are you saying that the twenty five thousand dollars is also in that regard? In other words, it's a gift to the town mitigation for the tree cutting, which the town can use specifically for uh the care of trees and planting of trees, correct?
The language is such that it is either for on Lake Shore, in Lake Shore Center, or um working with the um working with the town for off-site mitigation as well. So there's discretion there.
Well, yeah, I I'm just saying I would like to see it as the flex billing was simply a gift to the town specifically designed for trees and tree cares. In other words, that before any tree is cut down, that you you gift the town the twenty five thousand dollars. That's where I'm trying to, you set the precedent with the flex building. I'd like to continue that with this building. That's all. I'd like you to consider that for the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, um. One thing, one general comment. Being on the plan where we get letters to the the board and we usually our our policy is to read them um before the during the meeting. We've stopped that because we've gotten such extensive letters for this particular project. And I can understand that, but at the same time, um people have sent letters in, have have really spent a lot of time on research. And I I I'm not sure how we can do this, but it people uh that are at this meeting, the uh the I'm not sure whether the uh the opponent for this project has read the letters or not. Um they should, and I I think that going forward, we have to change our process as chairman so that everybody has access to those letters.
Um so I'll just say, Mr. Jamie, in that in working with uh Mr. O'Brien. And and before we go to public comment, we'll note that we did receive, you know, a number of letters. But Mr. O'Brien's done a a good job of on the Community Economic Development website. There is a portal, which is all the power public correspondence received. So I mean, hopefully, all the board members are 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 reading what what they what they get. And if the public wants to, Shane just shared um a link to that uh portal um in the the comment section.
Well, that's fine. As long as the process works so everybody can can see the letters, okay?
I I would agree. There's been a tremendous amount of time put into some of these letters. But I I think if we read all the letters that we received for this project, then we would be here for another four hours. So I think it and then Mr. Really, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I and to Mr. Jamie's point, I mean, I think that, and I agree, if people have put effort and time and thoughtfulness into their letters, they've all requested that they be put on the record. And that's what Mr. O'Brien has done. Uh they haven't asked to have them read into the record. They've been put onto the record. And it's the obligation of the planning board members to read those comments as well as the applicant prior to a meeting. So um I mean, I I don't think that anybody has not been heard. And I I agree, just but again, I think if you look at all of them, they've all asked that this be made part of the record.
I may just quickly, uh Mr. Chairman, just two uh three things, the two quick ones. I like to see solar on the roof. I like to they they mention EV chargers getting set for it. They should be put in place. The uh electric vehicle charger should be there. The other thing I want to mention, which um neglected to mention the uh first time, the letter is sent to us uh on dated June third from the Open Space Committee regarding, I know, stormwater management. And I I'd like Mr. Tanzi to maybe comment on it in the future regarding um different ways on stormwater management. So I just can read a couple of lines to you. Uh this is from the Open Space Committee. We recommend proposed development. Consider the use of low-impact development techniques, green infrastructure techniques, and ecological stormwater strategies. Recommend the applicant consider the use of porous pavement and green infrastructure strategy such as fire retention and and that offer no ecological value. I'm sorry, green roofs to reduce additional land to be clear cut for stormwater detention basins that know that offer no ecological value. In lieu of detention basins, we recommend the applicant consider a strategy such as constructed stormwater wetlands. My only point is that there seems to be other ways of doing this. And and I think that um since we are worried, it seems that the main concern about this project is the lake. And we at least look at possibly different techniques for um the uh instead of the the normal detention basin. And I think Mr. Tanzi will have that letter also. Maybe he can comment on it next time. Thank you.
Mr. Jimmy, are you all set?
I'm all set right now.
Any other board members at this point?
Uh yeah, just following up the uh Aquafire Protection District. Uh the last time this was uh, well, I was absent, but the last time this was before the board. Uh Pat, you had brought up some kind of standard in there um about, I forget the exact verbiage you use. I apologize.
You know, and and I apologize. So I I are you talking about? So I did. I did read, and I have a copy of it right here. Um I did, one of the things that I I read, I think I interpreted incorrectly. And it was that regards to earth removal, Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, within six feet, I believe it was of the uh
Yeah, so 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 if you it and I I was trying to read through the document after somebody brought it up in a meeting. And then I took the time to read it, you know, through in in detail after. And it it was it was item sixteen on page sixty-eight, and it and it talked about earth removal consisting of the removal of soil, loam, gravel or any other earth material, including mining activities to within six feet of maximum high groundwater. And I think at that point, I asked uh Mr. Silva how deep the groundwater was in that area and how much would be removed um as determined from monitoring wells in accordance with the provisions of the earth removal. What I what I didn't continue to read was, um it says, except except for excavations of building foundations, approved roads, utility works, or exempted agricultural uses. So I I don't in my, you know, I I'm I don't think we can apply that anymore because we shouldn't consider that because it's in relation to the construction of the hotel. So that's why I I didn't bring it up today. But I I did go through, I did go through the the whole Aqua Protection District um overlay district and what requires a special permit and what doesn't. And it talks about different lot sizes and and everything else. And the only thing that I can see and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, and Mr. Tanzi can correct me if I'm wrong. The only thing that would apply in this case would be the drainage standards. So is that how you understand it, Mr. Tanzi, from an uh technical point of view?
Yes.
Yeah, and to that point too, there I know there's been talk about the special a special permit being required um within the uh this Aquifer District, um but based on the site plans presented, uh this project is only creating ten percent impervious surface compared to the fifty percent impervious surface that um is mentioned within the uh zoning ordinance.
Right, and I think that's just something to be mindful of if they do try to create another lot out of this large fossil. And we have to make sure that the hotel is still in compliance with the Aqua Protection District in the future, so. So I did bring that up, but I I was wrong, Mr. McDonald.
Okay, thank you. Yep, that cleared it cleared it up. Thank you.
Anyone else on the board?
Yeah, could I just I just have a question for the applicant? What what is, just to clarify, what is being proposed in terms of tree cutting? Tree cutting just for the hotel or beyond that?
The tree cutting is pursuant to the plan. I don't know if we want to pull the plan up, but it is the, everything is on the lot that the the hotel will be on.
Nothing beyond the hotel, correct?
Well, the I would, it's probably best to look at the the plan if that's available.
I believe the last time I looked at it, there was the the area in front of the hotel was also going to be cut.
Yeah, which is part of that same lot at this point. So that's that's why I'm making the clarification.
Okay.
Yes, there is.
Just again, just to clarify for me, what's the purpose of cutting all the trees in front of the hotel?
It's for grading and for visibility there. For grading out so we can grade out the rest of the lot.
It's not parking, though.
No, it's not parking. No, and in fact, we we were hoping that um ultimately there could be some shared parking. Again, we don't know what's going to um at this point, but the intent is at some point there'd be some shared parking with the hotel.
Considering what uh truly said regarding water usage, um you don't have any intention of putting another building in that spot, do you?
Not at this point, no. That it's a long, long-range plan.
I mean, again, again, just from my identification, the clearing is not for the purpose of future building, correct?
We're clearing that area. At some point, there, like Mr. Really said, we've got, there are other issues ahead of us in before another building would be built there. I don't know if that answers your question, hopefully.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, if Mr. Mr. Rully's calculations are correct, you can't build anything else.
I don't know if we if it's being stated that we can't build anything else.
I can state it.
Okay, Mr. Really can state it.
I guess I I all I'm trying to do is minimize the amount of what you're considering cutting down. If you're talking about cutting trees down that don't have to be cut down in in anticipation of the possibility of building something in the future, then that would be, I'd be totally against that.
Okay, I mean, the in that area, the expectation is that we would be clearing the lot. Um it's our it's the part of the property. Uh we've had it on the plan. We are enhancing the landscape around the property. And we're working with the town on a on a mitigation component to that as well.
Hey, Ray, uh uh Mr. Chairman, can I speak? Sure. I I I think um what you got to understand is that um that part of that area is where the utilities come and are going to tie into Lake Shore. So there's water and sewer going through that area. Uh part of that is a connection road to Lake Shore and some of the drainage associated with it are along that along that stretch as well. And um part of what is being done or was considered was to do at least the grading part of that area there so that you're not uh in the future, you're not coming back and having to uh redo the whole area in there when you've already got other uses that are up and running. Um obviously, the obstacle of the a hundred thousand uh gallon limitation has to be overcome before that. Another building would be considered on there. And even with MIPA filings, these things are being considered for a future being five years or more. Uh and that's really the threshold when it when it comes to Viper. So it's nothing that's imminent, and it's nothing that's defined. Um MIPA wants you to define things when you know it, but when you don't know it, um you you can't define it. You've seen how things have changed over the years, just what somebody thought might go into a certain area and then what ultimately went into that area. So uh it's at this point here, it's an undefined issue. Uh but there is some clearing that's related to utility connections and and drainage and access for certain.
Mr. Really?
Yeah, so I I mean, I appreciate where, and I think Mr. Jamien's concern is 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 well-founded. Um and I understand what Mr. Silva, Mr. Silva is saying that, and and I would just say that, you know, if in fact, we want to follow Mr. Silva's logic, that if you make a decision on this, you can in your decision limit where trees can be removed. I don't want, and I've made this point to the applicant, short of them identifying another source of water or another source of wastewater, there is, you know, and I understand it's part of the application process. This is what we would like to do. That no further development is happening here, short of those two things happening. So to Mr. Jamien's point, if you're cutting trees anticipating that I'm going to go away or at some point, somebody's going to allow you to put a fifty-five and older in there, that is not part of this site plan review. So I think that, you know, the board is in their discretion, is in a position to limit the amount of tree removal they want for the purposes that Mr. Silva has articulated. But if it's being done because we think or we hope in the future this is going to happen, that's outside of the purview of what this site plan review is.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, and I guess to raise point as well, too, i- if there's going to be the raising of that property and the clearing of trees is that we don't want it to be let if that is the intention that the town isn't left looking at one oh four people driving by of tree trunks or rubble or just dirt mounds. Um I think that the the town also has those concerns that if that were the case, then there would be loomed and seeded that entire area and properly maintained. So I think that if that were part of any stipulation of decision in terms of maintenance and condition of the the property or the 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 quote-unquote vacant property, I I think that'd be uh something that we could condition and safeguard for the town.
Yes, and that's we the if if you look at the grading plan that's been proposed, which is which shows this being graded off. And we'd certainly be happy to add a note that we would be loaned and topsoiled and that uh it would be maintained. And if you look at what's out there today, I'm sure everyone's driven by at this point, um that lawn is maintained.
May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Uh sure, I was to kind of go ahead. I'm sorry.
Uh so my name is Pat County. I'm the CEO of Clamont. Our company has owned this site, one hundred and seventy acres, over twenty-five years. I don't believe anybody uh can accuse us of not being a custodian, a good custodian of the site and of these properties. We have a very major investment here. And I just want to go on the record that this hotel needs visibility for one oh four, or we can't build it. It won't succeed if you if it's hidden by trees. Oh, who's going to find it? So we 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 have to clear enough trees to have visibility for one oh four. And I also want to state for the record, we're we're not willing to give up any rights we have, future rights we may have to development. You know, most of the site's been developed. There's a few sites left. But uh we we I want to go on the record, we're not surrendering any rights we may have in the future. I understand the question of water and sewer. Can be other options. Many people do their own onsite sewer and water treatment plants, you know, so we're not prepared to give up any future rights. The remaining site is probably uh the most valuable site with the extensive frontage on one oh four and and views of the lake. And it would probably be the last site developed, but as said, we've told the state, there's no plans to do anything there in the next three to five years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. County. Anybody else from the um planning board or the um applicant team at this point, before we turn it over to public comment?
No, you hit on you hit on a bunch of issues for me, Pat. Thanks.
Mr. Geller, I I you broke up. I'm sorry.
You hit on a bunch of issues for me. Thank you.
Any additional comments from the team or from um staff or from the board? Okay, so at this point, I'd just like to note, um and we stated this earlier, that we did receive a number of pieces of correspondence. We're not going to read all those into the record this evening. We we do acknowledge that we received them. Uh Mr. O'Brien did up upload those to the portal um on the Community Economic Development website. I believe he also uh shared that link in the chat feature if you want to view those.
And just
Go ahead, Mr. Brian.
Sure, and I also forwarded every direct correspondence, so whether it be attachments or your actual emails to all planning board members.
So I just, I, you know, I I want to encourage the public to speak. Um I just ask that you be respectful of time. And if um it's a comment that somebody has already made or something that we've heard in the past, uh if you could just either quickly state it or refrain from stating it again. And um with that, we can turn it over to the public for comment. If there's anybody here that would like to speak, Mr. O'Brien, if you could help me uh manage the chat.
Sure thing. If you would like to speak, please state that you'd like to do so or raise your virtual hand. Um you can use the reaction feature uh from Zoom. So we do have a hand raise. Uh we have Jenna's iPad.
Hi, Janet Hanson Pleasant Street Bridgewater. Thank you. I just have quick, um it's quick, but I I've had the question, looking at the plans. Um and maybe it's been answered, I don't know, but why does the hotel have to be so far back? If you need to cut all those trees in the front so it's visible, et cetera, why isn't it moved closer to? Why isn't it moved closer to the Lake Shore Center Road? That way you're not having to worry as much about the wetland in the back. You don't have the buffer cutting across the um, part of the hotel plans. And you wouldn't be close to the historic part, you would be further away from those areas. And if you're gonna be cutting the trees anyways, move it forward so you can have it visible. And um, then there would be less cutting behind it. So um, my concern is, well, I have a lot of concerns, but one concern bringing up the trees is it doesn't seem um, environmentally eco, you know, uh, sound to be cutting that many trees. So you can see a hotel that's sitting back when it could have been brought further, you know, closer. And then you would have had to cut so much in the back. So um, I'd like an answer to that. Uh, so that's it for right now. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs., anybody at next comment or question? Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this point?
Um, we see, I have uh, a Mark P. and I see Bernice Morrissey with her hand up. As well as uh, Jean with her hand up or clapping. Um, but I'll allow for Mark P. to uh, talk.
Sure, um. Am I, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so the first thing I wanna bring up.
So, so sir, just, just so we have a, we just say name and, and name and address to the record, please.
Sure, sure. Uh, Mark Peterson, forty-three Church Street. Sorry about that. Uh, so the first thing I wanna bring up is that um, that the lawn is lawn is considered forty to sixty percent pervious, so that's not really um, uh, complete pervious surface like a woodland would be. Um, so I don't know if it's ever factored into the um, into our stormwater management. Um, and as far as, as um, Clermont being a good steward of the land in the area, uh, there's, there's so much invasive um, plants in the existing properties or the current properties that I, I would have to, I, I wa- I don't wanna make an accusation, but I would have to. Um, but the next point is um, so I was looking for the, the operations and maintenance uh, plan for the property. And there's, there's nothing about um, maintaining the land free of invasive plants. And there's one item in the zoning ordinance about um, invasive plants, which is um, prohibited prohibiting the planting of invasive plants. There's, I'm just wondering, does that mean prohibit invasive plants from establishing in the property as well? So that's one question. And if you compare um, the number of times invasive plants is listed in the zoning ordinance to um, Bridgewater's Hazard Mitigation Plan, which lists invasive plants or invasive a hundred eighty-two times. I think it's very important as a hazard mitigation that we do consider um, invasive plants um, management in this property. And as, as I've seen on the access property, um, invasive plants are, are just completely overtaking um, that property. So if, if, that's, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Um, this, Mr. O'Brien?
Um, I will let, um, we have Jean with her hand raised and I'll let uh, Bernice Morrissey afterward.
Thank you.
All right, Jean, you good to go?
Hello, uh, this is Jean De Batista, two sixty Lakeside Drive, uh, Bridgewater, Mass. And um, I have a number of comments, but I wanna express concern that the decision uh, related to the special permit didn't allow us to speak at that part of the meeting. Uh, because I do think that a lot of us spent quite a bit of research on whether or not the special permit in nineteen eighty-eight should apply and um, we don't believe it does. Uh, therefore, you know, while I understand the board has already made a decision on that, I'm extremely disappointed that the public wasn't allowed to comment during that part of the meeting. So that's number one. Um, number two, well, you know, uh, there was a um, comment about good stewardship uh, by the president of Clermont. And I would like to say that the impression of the public is not the same impression uh, that you have. Uh, we are concerned about the fact a number of things related to Clermont's past management of this project. We're also concerned about the fact that Clermont is very interested in a very dense development in the future, uh, which does not show any sensitivity whatsoever to the concerns of the community. Uh, so that's my second comment. Uh, my third comment is very practical in nature, which is that uh, there are no perennial streams listed on the site plan. And they are now listed in MIPA documentation. So I'd like to make that point, that that needs to be something that the board considers having changed. And I think, you know, the uh, you know, I think there's, the public uh, would like to know and agrees with the I, the board's comments related to trees. Uh, it is obvious that the trees that are being cut down are not solely for the site plan. And we believe that they should therefore be removed and not considered as part of this project. We have said this before and we're gonna say it again. We think that the board should be waiting for MIPA's um, findings in this situation, which are still in progress. And that they should also wait for the Conservation Board. Um, because there are an extreme number of environmental issues related to this endeavor and the future endeavors planned by Clermont. So that's it for now.
Mrs. De Batista, if I could just comment um, quickly, so I don't think we acted on the nineteen eighty-eight special permit, in my opinion. I think that, I think that it's our job to weigh this project against, you know, weigh this project in terms of a site plan and against that nineteen eighty-eight permit for compliance. If a board member believes that it is in compliance and it, and it's, and it's, you know, in line with that approval and the site plan complies and they can vote in favor of it if they, in the projects. If, if they believe it doesn't, they can vote against it if they have valid reasons. So I don't think we disregarded the nineteen eighty-eight special permit. I, I think that we got an opinion as to whether they needed an additional special permit um, for this project. So I think that nineteen eighty-eight permit is still very much in play.
My, can I ask, am I allowed to ask a question about that? I know that was already voted on, but I would like to ask a question. Is that allowed?
If you, if, if you wanna ask it to town staff and they have an answer, that's fine.
Yeah, and, and, at any point of any application, uh, an applicant can request a withdrawal without prejudice and that's what occurred. So, so the board voted.
But if you, if you'd like to ask the, what are the staff a question about that opinion, that's, that's fine.
Is that you guys or are you talking about someone else?
Um, I, yeah, wh- where it's the legal opinion from the town attorney, I'd like either Mr. Ruly or Mr. O'Brien to answer it, but.
In tur- in, in terms of not allowing for public comment for a withdrawal without prejudice?
Um, that's part of what I'm saying, but what I fully disagree with is the fact that I believe the nineteen eighty-eight permit should have expired. And because there was no building within two years, in fact, there wasn't building with the, and the nineteen eighty, this, this decision was between McNeil and between um, the town. Um, everything has changed since that time, but there is a clause in several uh, zoning bylaws and references to the fact that if no building occurs within two years, then the permit should have expired.
And, and I, and I think, I thi- I, we heard, we heard that question and I think that's why we uh, well, Mr. Jamie and asked for a, an opinion on the special permit from uh, Attorney Rollins.
Can we, is it, is it allowed to request that opinion in writing? So that we can understand how she addressed that specific question amongst others? Uh, because it doesn't feel like that point has really been adequately addressed.
So, as I said earlier, if the planning board wants to request anything from the town attorney, they can do that through the town manager's office. However, there have been two forty B projects, two office buildings, a flex building and a hotel that have been built since nineteen eighty-eight. So the town is not gonna put them in a position, ourselves in a position to say, nothing has happened in two years. That logically doesn't make sense, but you can make that request to the town manager's office if you like.
Um, about that, um, cause I'm just trying to understand here. Um, each one of those times, Bob, they did um, include a special permit in those applications. And so I do under- I do understand your previous point of saying that from your point of view, they didn't have to. Um, but that is why this is what it looks like to the public as a break in precedence. And having spent a lot of time trying to understand this and research it, um, having seen what was said in those expiration clauses and what's actually said in the nineteen eighty-eight decision itself, it doesn't feel like this issue has been, and I understand your attorney looked at it, and I do appreciate that because that was a comment that I actually did make um, in my letter and I did request you do that. So I do appreciate the fact that you did that. Uh, but I still have no sense of how you reached or the town reached that decision. I have no sense of that based upon what I see in these documents. And what I see in the bylaws at that time, the bylaws around that time, all sorts of stuff. So, uh, you know, I'm only trying to be extremely honest here in that it feels like that whole process is kind of been, and this is not in any way an accusation towards anyone. So please keep that in mind, but it all seems very under the covers and not something that the public has been allowed to comment or express their concerns on um, other than in our letters, which weren't, you know, which I understand how lengthy they are and so on and so forth. So I do understand why you can't read them all in the meeting. But I don't think the specific points in those letters have been addressed about this, and I do think they are of concern to the public. I do think that there is um, a need to have this clarification. And I would really like to see it occur.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure, Mr. Really?
I mean, and I, I, I think that we appreciate the concerns that have been brought forward. Uh, procedurally, uh, there have been a lot of mistakes made in terms of how applications have gone forward. Uh, we've made the decision, we're not gonna perpetuate those mistakes in terms of what that process should be. Uh, at the request of you and others, we asked the town attorney for clarification as to A, is the nineteen eighty-eight special permit still in effect? And his answer was yes. And as a result of that, uh, then this kicks this to site plan review. In no way are we diminishing your comments, your concerns, they're legitimate. However, we need to make sure that we're following the rules and regulations as they exist with respect to site plan review. If the town attorney had told us this, this should be a special permit, then this would be a different conversation. The, the town attorney is not gonna issue an opinion to the planning board. That has to go through the town manager's office. That, my office, my staff is not the conduit for questions such as that. So, I mean, I don't have an answer for you with respect to that. I, I, I do wanna acknowledge that you and others have raised valid points and we understand what they are. The direction that we have gotten from the town attorney is, this is a site plan review.
All right.
And, and, and this, Mr. De Batista, if, if um, you know, I think we have taken your comments. You know, I, I know I've read all the letters, I think, except for one that we got today, which I'll read, you know, before the next meeting. And I think a lot of good points are made. Um, and I also think that as a board, we have taken that into consideration. I know Mr. Jamie has asked for a written opinion over and over and over again. Um, and we didn't get it, we got a verbal opinion through our staff. Um, but if it's the will of the board to ask for that written opinion, um, we, we as a board can write to uh, Mr. Dutton and ask for that opinion for the next meeting.
That would be wonderful.
And that would have, that, that, that would have to be, that, that would have to be, you know, a board decision and somebody would have to bring that up, but but we, I just, I just want you to think, we're not ignoring your comments. It's, I believe that we're following the process correctly now. And the plan development district was created through a special permit, and once a, once a plan development is created, then it, it's site planner view. There are uses and the table of uses that are by special permit. But this is an as of right in a plan development that was created by a special permit, so.
Can I, can I ask you one que- I'm sorry to perpetuate this, but can I ask you one question about that? Cause we're, one of the things that's been confusing for a lot of us is the fact that are we going by the bylaws at the time or the currently very newly updated bylaws? Because the bylaws at the time only included a motel as a use and also only included um, and for the motel required a special permit. So it's very confusing as to which one applies. Um, and a motel has a different definition, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so, you know, the only time that I've seen a special permit not required is in the very new zoning regulations. And that is something that I'm trying to understand in terms of which one would actually apply. Because if the new stuff applies, that brings a lot of other things into scope. If the old stuff applies. So you can see it's a little confusing.
I, I'll, um, just to move it on and we can get some of these questions answered for you. I, I, Mr. O'Brien, I believe we're reviewing this site planner view under the new regulations because that's how we review it. But I think as far as permitting, we're following the nineteen eighty-eight decision.
Is that correct? There, there, there are many terms under the special permit under the nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-eight decision that we are following. But in terms of what this has filed, been filed under in terms of application and permitted uses, is the current zoning ordinance.
One, one question on that, because when this was filed, those weren't in effect. The other, the late, the version before that wasn't in effect, which would mean that hotels were not a yes, on the appropriate table, they were a special permit required and they were motels.
You know, I, I wanna move on, but I, I can tell you, I sat in on the zoning re-credification and hotels in the last version, which was basically just a year or so ago, hotels, that was not, that didn't get changed at all. Hotels were in the last, the last version, maybe not the nineteen eighty-eight. But the, the last version that I think was updated in January of twenty twenty-three, or late December of last year, it, it was, it wasn't a.
I don't wanna, I, I understand you need to move on. I appreciate your.
No, I think, I mean, I, you know, this.
To have this discussion, I do really appreciate that. And I want, you know, I think you guys do great work. Um, but also that the public has a perception of this uh, development. And it's not just this hotel in isolation. Um, it's the future development as well. I do appreciate Bob saying that ain't gonna happen based upon the amount of water. Uh, but I also see the developer turning around and saying, we're not giving up any of our rights. And so um, we'll have more discussions in the future.
And I, we'll move on, Brad. Just think from a staff perspective and from a board perspective, we're trying to do it the right way now. And I think that the nineteen eighty-eight decision, I, I, I don't see any downside to not con- to, to, to giving up that special permit that was filed. We have a special permit that we're operating under and they have to comply with that and they have to comply with site plan, so. Okay, um, moving on, Mr. O'Brien?
Sure, we had uh, Bernice Morrissey with her hand raised.
Thank you, yes. Um, Bernice Morrissey, I'm with, with me is my husband David Morrissey, one fifty Lakeside Drive, Bridgewater. Um, couple of things, I just have to ask a favor. I got my letter in very late. So, and I forgot to add, enter it into the record, I would like that, I would appreciate that. Um, so from that point, I have to tell you how disappointed I am to hear that the trees along one oh four will be cleared, any trees. But I also have to say, I'm very glad to have Mr. Carney in our presence. Because I wanna, I don't know how you feel about nature, Mr. Carney, but I've been here.
Mrs. Morrissey, if you could just keep your comments and not just, before we get into personal attacks or anything, just keep them.
Oh, it's not an attack by anyone.
Just, just keep them to the project, that's all. Thank you.
It is about the project and somebody mentioned the land out front being a recharge, the grass. That probably has um, That probably has, um. Nitrites are, um, some things that shouldn't go into the lake too. So I just wanted to make that point. Um, but I would love for Mr. Carney to hear our side and even. If I'd welcome him over the house to see where, what we see. And this is very important because all of the zoning laws that are in place so that. The buildings are in keeping with the height of the buildings opposite in the neighborhood, that is not what we see. Um, and to hear that the tree, that more trees are coming down. That's another buffer zone lost to us personally. And I'm speaking personally for the first time, because I generally speak for the common good. This is important. Uh, it, and in the thirty five years that I've been here, this is called Lake Smart. This is my Bible. I pay attention to what that, the, what's happening on the lake and I just. We're all connected hydraulically out here. Mr. Carney, you're a neighbor. Of us and I, I would love to work with you more. And I know you have opened the doors to have, to hear residents, but I don't think you're hearing us. So that's all I'm going to say. And.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I also forwarded along to the board. I haven't had the opportunity to place it on the public comment portal, but I will have it placed, um. Um, for tomorrow, but the, uh, her letter has been forwarded along to the board.
Thank you.
All right, I see, uh, Julia Blanchard's hand raised.
And my comments, um, I mean, I echo many of the comments that I've already heard, but mine, um, have more to do with the. Quality of our farming town. We've seen a lot of development in, in the past few years and, um, and this tract of land and. We've seen an increase in traffic and noise and light. And, um, we've had shots, shots fired up at the apartments in August. We've had reports of vandalism. We hear sirens almost every single day up there, either at the apartments or the hotel. Um, I used to be able to stay at my house and not hear the highways. Now I can hear every truck that comes down the highway. Uh, before they cut all those trees down. We couldn't hear those, those trucks. Um, so what, what has already gone in there has affected us. A great deal and that I'm not even talking about the effect on the schools and the water and the, uh, in the, um, ecology. But just our quality of life. And they want to put more and more and more stuff in there and make more and more and more money. Well, you know what? It's affecting us too. It's affecting our quality of life. We bought homes in a farming town and we would really like to stay on our beautiful lake and have this. Woodsy area that we love so much. Stay that way. Thank you.
Just for the record, Ms. Blanchard, uh, could you put, state your name and address?
Julia Blanchard, twenty seven Bridle Road.
Sure thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. O'Brien. I missed that.
No problems. All right, we have Melissa Raymond data's hand raised.
Hi, good evening. Melissa Raymond data from Lakeside Drive in Bridgewater. Um, so we've turned, taught, heard a lot about this nineteen eighty eight McNeil decision. And how we have to abide by it, right? So the water, a hundred thousand gallons per day, hundred thousand gallons sewer. There are thirteen conditions, okay, um, on this McNeil special permit. One of which is operating hours. And they were, the planning board at the time was very strict about these hours, six AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday. Um, a hotel is a twenty four hour business. So that doesn't adhere to the thirteen conditions of the McNeil nineteen eighty eight special permit. So if the town is going to. Accept this document as rule for your decision. Then you need to look at all of those conditions and ensure that Claremont's in compliance. And in addition to that, the aquifer is mentioned in that decision. And I don't know if you knew this, but their irrigation there on that site is, um, is from a well. And I assume that there'll be a well for the hotel if they are allowed to go forward with that. Um, but you're telling us and Claremont's telling us, we're not going to, we don't know if we're going to develop the other half of that lot. We, we're not really sure. So you have these zoning conditions that you've put forth, the towns put forth with the aquifer protection overlay district, right? And the triggers fifty percent of impervious surface. But they're not telling you if they're going to develop it. They are telling you they're going to cut the trees down. And they're telling you they're not going to move the hotel over to Lakeshore Drive because they want to save that parcel. Because it's a prime piece of land, right? So let's think about that. They could move the hotel. They could, they could move the stormwater systems out of the, out of the, the buffer zones. They could not disturb the historic and archaeological sites there. They could do this now and they won't, okay? And so now we have to wait, you're telling me, for them to decide to develop the other. Half of that lot to trigger an aquifer protection overlay district zoning requirement. How is this possible? And how is it possible that we have zoning that does not protect? The environment, but instead it's protecting the developer if it's read this way. So I'm asking you to please read the McNeil, the thirteen, all the conditions. Because if we're holding them to this, hold them to everything, including those operating hours. That were designed for trucks, for, 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 for other kinds of businesses. Not for a hotel. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramadada. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak at this point?
Uh, we have Pat Neri's hand up.
Listen, Neri.
Good evening, Pat Neri, two twenty five Lakeside Drive. I'm very disappointed to hear Attorney Rawlins' opinion. I would, uh, I will be putting in a request so that I can actually read that opinion and hopefully be able to understand it. Because it does appear that the PDD special permit back in nineteen eighty eight. Did expire in nineteen ninety. But, uh, apparently there are some other things going on. Probably the errors that were made by previous planning boards set a precedent, so you think you have to follow that. But I don't see it that way. Anyway, um, the good news is that the site plan has to go under our new zoning, which is, which includes, uh. Larger projects. There is some good language in there that might protect a lot of our acreage and trees. And when I say our, I mean, it's what we see and what affects our lives. I know the carneys own it, but, uh, we have to live with it. So the new larger projects, um, there's a paragraph in there that says that we are to preserve and enhance. The natural features of the site to avoid disturbances of environmentally sensitive areas. To minimize alteration of the natural features of the site. That would include four acres of trees. And, uh, the clearing of four acres of trees to be converted to. A lawn is unacceptable. Actually, it's outrageous. There is no mitigation for, for a forest. And if it, if there, if that was acceptable, twenty five thousand dollars isn't going to cut it. I think, uh, and, and it's for his own benefit. It's not for our town, according to what I read. In the responses to Mr. Silva's, uh, you know, to our town engineers' questions. So there is no acceptable mitigation for cutting four acres of trees, especially. Today, in, in this time period, when we have climate change. We have to take care of our planet. We cannot just keep doing whatever, what we were doing. It's not business as usual. So, um, the other thing, I would really like to wait for the MIPA decision before our planning board makes a decision. Or at least make their, the planning board decision based upon or conditioned upon the MIPA decision. Because they have been looking out for this parcel and the area. Because it's environmentally sensitive. And you know, we have, this is the ACEC, area of critical environmental concern. So I thank you for listening.
Any other public comments at this point? Mark, P, do you have? Additional comments or is that from last time? I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, I have additional comments. Thank you. Mark Peterson, um, forty three Church Street. So I just want to get back to the operations and maintenance of the project, which is part of the, um. The site review, I believe. And it doesn't mention invasive plants. I just want to say, if you can see the background behind me. That is a picture of the Japanese knotweed in the Axis parking lot. So if you, if you want to see the stewardship of, of the environment. Take a ride around the Axis parking lot, probably, it's probably still there. If there's twelve foot. Monoculture of Japanese knotweed. That is the, one of the worst invasive plants and it's, it's, uh. The whole entire parking lot is surrounded by Japanese knotweed. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any other board, uh, public comments at this point?
Oh, I'm in terms of board comments or?
Do we have any more public comments at this?
Uh, we have, um, Mr., uh, David Morrissey's hand raised.
Yeah, you're on, Dave.
Thank you, David Morrissey, one fifty Lakeside Drive. On the western side of this property, according to Google Earth, there are five acres of dead trees that have been flooded out. I'm concerned that the water isn't reaching the lake behind the apartment building. And I'm also concerned that there's a viaduct under four ninety five to allow the deer. To not cross the roadway, but to, to, to stay underneath, uh, the interstate.
It's flooded.
Uh, that's flooded also because of the, uh, drainage problems on the property now. Uh, if you get on four ninety five, uh, by the Burger King, I'll get twenty four to four ninety five north. You could see it down the right-hand side. There's, there's five acres of dead trees there.
There's more than, it's up to nine.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to point that out, that the viaduct when. Mass DOT, the Fed DOT, uh, mass wildlife, everybody got together. To put this viaduct under the highway to, to keep wild animals off the highway and underneath and into. Beautiful land, which is getting developed awful fast. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment at this point?
We have, uh, Sam Baumgartner, Garten's hand raised.
Mr. Baumgartner.
Sam Baumgartner, sixty Short Street. Um, I, I wanted to comment first on how amazing this meeting is. In terms of the, the preparation, the amount of information that has been developed. By the Lake Nip team and the many people from that area. Uh, I can't recall many meetings in my many years in Bridgewater where you had so many. Early prepared citizens come before you with very important questions. And I think the amount of work that has gone in to those questions, comments and letters deserves your full attention. And every one of those concerns needs to be addressed by the board. Secondly, I also want to point out that I'm from, and I put this in my letter, that I'm from the other side of town. This is not about just a bunch of neighbors complaining. This is an effect on the entire town of Bridgewater, what happens down at the nip. And like Ms. Neary said, I'm very concerned about the overall environmental quality. As a citizen of the town, not just as a neighbor of that property. So please give your full respect to the people who have done so much. To bring up every important point and I hope that every one of their points will be answered going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you. Uh, as of this time, I don't see anyone's hands raised. I don't see any virtual hands raised, nor do I see anyone in the chat.
Okay, all right. Based on those comments, is there any? Questions or thoughts from the, the board at this point? Is there any action or any additional requests we want to ask for based on those comments or where do we stand at this point?
Yeah, you, I believe you mentioned we could request a, a written opinion from town council if, uh, the board so wished. I think that would be a good idea.
A written opinion in regards to what, Mr. McDonald's?
The, uh, special permit requirements are, uh, from the eighty, uh, nineteen eighty eight decision.
You mean whether it's still valid and? And if. And how the supplies or what's the scope of the, what's the scope of the request?
Uh, yeah, I guess just whether it would, uh, still apply given the potential two-year gap, um. Let me think out a word this. Yeah, sorry, I'm not too good at the legal stuff.
Well, I mean, I mean, I, I think the two issues that keep getting brought up are, are, you know, one, is it valid, right? And, and two, is this a substantial deviation or not, right? I mean, those are really the only two things that would debate in, correct?
You put it much better than I could. Thank you.
If you want to make a motion and somebody wants to second it, we can consider it. If not, we can move on.
Some mood.
Mr. Jusko, I just, I just want to add that there's no guarantee that the town manager is going to. I don't think you can condition something that you don't know what the result is going to be. You can make the request. Town manager can make the decision that he doesn't agree that you need a written opinion on this.
I understand, that's, that's no problem.
So is that, so, so what you're saying, Mr. Rui, is that? You wouldn't pass it on to the town manager. I would have to request that, is that correct?
You, you as the chair would have to make that request, yes. And I just, I don't want. You to condition something that you're absolutely going to get an affirmative answer that he agrees.
No, I mean, we can ask for it. If we don't get it, we don't get it. We have to move on, so.
That's all. I just want to make sure that everyone's clear on that.
Yes, I understand. Thank you.
Pat, I'll, I'll second the motion. I, I think that, um, along that we get written opinions from. Town engineer, from, uh, from everybody in town, we should get a written opinion from the, the town council. And if, if the, if it doesn't work out, I mean, we don't know what the response will be. I'm not, I don't have a specific. Response I expect from the town council, but I do think you should go on record. So I'll second the motion.
Okay, just for discussion, I mean, I think, I think we can ask for it. I think that if we get it, we can consider it. I think if we don't get it, we still have to move forward and. My decision is, has to be based on our, our best judgment. So I, I don't. I, I think we should ask for it, but I don't think it should hold up, you know, the applicant or our decision-making process if we don't get it, that's all.
I agree. It's just the thing I like to try to get on the record, uh, for, uh, the citizens.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. McDonald and a second by Mr. Jemian. Is there any discussion? I'll take the role, Ms. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I, yes, okay. Now, um. Is there anything the applicant or staff would like to add at this point before we, um. Continue this and digest all this information we received from the public hearing this evening and. Catch up on correspondence we've received and allow Mr. Tansy. I looked at Mr. Tansy's review. It looks like he got through. Um, up to sheet eight, I thought it was.
Uh, seven, I believe.
Seven, right. So that, that review has to continue. Um, and we have a lot of information to consider as individual board members, so. Is there a motion to? Be, before I ask for a motion to continue, is there anything that the, uh, town staff, that the board members or the applicant would like to add?
Just, we just asked that Mr. Tansy have the review completed before the next meeting. Um, as I've said previously, uh, I am not going to forward this to the conservation commission. And until such time as the planning board takes action, uh, the meat process is still going on. So I mean, there are a lot of steps that have to happen, but. I mean, everyone that's raising issues with respect to the environment conservation stormwater. That will all be addressed at the conservation commission.
So, so, so Mr. Rui, just to that, on, on May seventeenth, we, on, on the May seventeenth meeting. It was a position of the town that we were not going to move forward without a, uh, MIPA decision. That's changed, um, from your perspective at this point?
That was never my position. I mean, I, I think that the ultimate decision in terms of whether this project can go forward. I mean, the planning board. If it so happens, can, can be dish, conditioned on that approval. approval, if it so happens, can, can be dish-conditioned on that approval. The Conservation Commission, if they decide to move forward with approval, that can be dish-conditioned on that. But all of those should be conditioned on that. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just in regards to site plan review itself, I did provide a memorandum to uh, the board um, regarding my comments regarding site plan review and the performance standards. Um, so I hope the board looks that over um, as we um, discuss site plan review um, in this, for this project.
All right, so to keep everything moving, um, Mister O'Brien, and we're going to be asking town manager that for an opinion and Mister Tansy has to finish his review. Um, and the board members have to prepare uh, based on all the information that they've received. When is the next available meeting? Um, so we can, you know, accomplish all those things prior to the meeting and, and have availability.
Well, I would say that the next meeting that this project could be available for would be the October eighteenth project. Um, so I, I think that if that's okay with the applicant, um, that would be an available date.
Any comments from the applicant on that?
Yes, the eighteen, the eighteenth is fine.
Any board questions or comments? Uh, do we have a motion to continue?
Some move.
By Mister McDonald, do we have a second? And Mister Jemian? Any discussion? And that's six thirty PM on the eighteenth.
That's correct.
So, uh, Miss Rojas?
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Geller?
Yes.
Mister Jemian?
Yes.
I'm a S. Okay, thank you for everyone that attended.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing our voice.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, uh, continuing on, uh, we have item three. This is a, a planning board public hearing in regards to four fifty-six Bedford Street, map sixty-two, lot thirty-four. Um, and lot eight, this is a proposed expansion of parking spaces pursuant to ten point six site plan approval. Um, Mister O'Brien, the public hearing notice, is that in the, is that in the packet? I have the packet right in front of me.
Um, I believe so, but let me see if I can pull it up.
So just while we're looking for that, you did receive green cards, is that correct?
That is cor- I, I received notice of green cards. I didn't receive the particular green cards, but the applicant um, sent over um, images that the green cards have been sent. And I did read, I did receive comments from a butter, so I can confirm that they were.
Okay, and I don't, I don't see, um, I don't see in my packet the public hearing notice. Do you mind pulling it up on the screen?
Yes, just give me one second. I don't have it readily in front of me. I should. Gonna have to pull up the newspaper.
It's all right. We need a break anyway.
No, let's keep going. All right, let me pull up a Word document of that notice. Just pull it up. Nope.
I'm sorry, I might have not printed it off. I just, I've.
No, I, I should, I usually typically provided to you. I'm just getting the email right now. I have. There we go.
MJ, you're back, right?
Yeah, I am, Mister Chairman.
All right.
So I'll read it quickly. So um, this is a public hearing notice that appeared in the um, uh, did it appear, is it just the Bridgewater Town page or the Enterprise, Mister?
Uh, C, it's C Brockton Enterprise.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The Bridgewater page.
Okay, so it appeared on nine-six and nine-thirteen in the uh, Brockton Enterprise. Uh, the notice read on Wednesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM, the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducting a public hearing via Zoom on an application by Israel Ishmael, and I apologize if I said that incorrectly, uh, for a site plan approval, section ten point six of the Bridgewater zoning ordinance for a parking lot expansion located at four fifty-six Bedford Street, Bridgewater, Mass. Assesses map sixty-two, lot thirty-four. The plans were prepared by Seph, is it Sepharon Engineering?
I think it's Spru- Spruhan.
Spruhan, I'm sorry. And are on file in the office of the town clerk and the CED office and website. All interested persons are encouraged to attend, and that was posted on behalf of the Bridgewater Planning Board. And we did uh, receive evidence that green cards were sent to a butter's.
Correct.
Um, so at this point, I will turn it over to the applicant to present their project. Is someone here from the um, applicant's team that would like to present?
I am here. I'm Israel Ismaila. Um, we have hired this Bruin Engineering to make the plot plan and all that. Uh, we have done our multi-feas, all our parts, what we have to do, so now we're waiting for you guys to make the decision about what our request.
Okay, so do you want to describe that request a little bit, sir? As to what you're looking to do and improvements that'll be made and existing conditions?
Uh, well, I'm not going to be able to talk about the um, uh, details of the plot plan, but um, I gotta tell you what's my request and uh, uh, rest of the things regarding um, uh, plot plan. If there's any technical questions, um, couple of agents from Spruhan Engineering is uh, in the meeting right now. Um, I think they are with us. So if there's any question, we can ask them, but um, about our business, about what, what's the project is, um, I can just share a little bit, uh, so far I can. So, um, I have opened the Elite Motors, which is used to be a car dealership before, and it was a, before, before, um, it was unlimited car parking lot after um, it became sixty uh, car license parking lot. And uh, when I uh, entered to the place a year and a half ago, about March, um, at that time, I have uh, applied for my dealer license. Um, at that time, um, I didn't really have much time to uh, prepare the plot plan, all that necessary documents, because I didn't really have time. And that's why I just request for fifty-car parking lot. And um, uh, it's been about a year, I'm working on the project, doing what is uh, requested, what is necessary. I prepare everything else and then um, send it to town. So, um, I'm asking to uh, expand my parking size up to seventy-one car. I think um, the city requirements, all that, uh, asking the certain size, whatever the uh, sizes. Uh, Spru- Spruhan Engineering worked on it, but um, we have done our part and then asking to requ- uh, make our parking lot up to seventy-one cars. Um, it's actually a large uh, parking lot, but um, uh, where we can um, draw, where we can um, uh, park the car on top of the asphalt. Um, that space is allow only seventy-one car, I believe. Um, that's the project we have prepared and then um, hand out to you guys. So, this much I can tell. Um, if there's any question, obviously, I have here to answer.
So I, I, I visited the site um, yesterday and just, just walked along Bedford Street to familiarize myself with the site. Do you have anything to do with the business that operates on the other half of the property? Or do you own the property?
No, I don't own the property. Uh, Thomas Cahill is on the property. Uh, there's a motorcycle dealer, uh, name is Cycle Pro. Um, he's my landlord, uh, that, there I think, um, trust there. Uh, the landlord, I lease the uh, property, um, one side. Uh, one side for the motorcycles, one side for the cars. And um, there's, there's, uh, what else I can tell you, um, about the parking, um?
Uh, I guess, I guess my concern when I went out there, um, and it's somewhat out of our purview and I, I'd like to be, I'd like to ask um, the Conservation Commission to look into it. It, it appears that on the north side of the property, um, that at the edge of the property or, or, or right around what you're showing is shaded. Um, there's a wetland issue and it appears that, it appears, I don't know if it's true or not. But it, because I've, I've, the wetlands are not marked on, on this plan other than, than just the front of the parking lot that there's being um, motorcycles discarded, or parts of motorcycles and i- i- into that area.
Um, the north side of the parking lot.
Correct. So I, I just, I have a concern that, that it, it appears that the, the um, you know, the property is already overtaxed. I mean, there's, there's obviously uh, you know, an issue with space if they're dumping or pushing, it was uh, motorcycles into that depression, which appears to be a wetland area.
I have nothing to do with the, with the north side of the parking lot, with the motorcycle site. I am only responsible for the um, the, where the car dealer is, and um, that is the uh, that's the plan that we are asking.
Can you, Mister Driscoll? Can't we see a diagram?
Yeah, can someone from Spruhan put the, the plans on the, share the screen?
And I guess, I guess my concern is, is that the site's a very busy site. Um, it does appear to be um, ramps and things around that parking lot for, for ATV use. There appears to be, um, you know, um, motorcycles being discarded. There, there looks like there's a fence put up when you walk around, uh, uh, down Route eighteen to hide what's, what's going on. I, I'm just, I'm uncomfortable, you know, increasing the capacity of that site without looking at the whole site. And I think that that, that we should ask Conservation to, to weigh in as well, but.
Yeah, could we get the existing conditions and the proposed conditions on the screen by the applicant?
I printed it off. I, I'm going off, I have.
Oh, okay. I'm just saying for the rest of everyone.
Uh, Dimitri, could you please share your screen showing the plans?
Yes, I can. Give me a second, please.
Uh, by the way, I would like to highlight this, so it's all existing payments, so we are not increasing any payment or we are not increasing the runoff at this site. Um, so we are just reutilizing uh, the existing parking spots. You know, it's been a one and a half years that Israel is running that business. And you know, every business needs to grow and improve, develop their income. So uh, for that reason, not only for that reason, of course, um, we are looking to increase the parking spots. And according to the regulations, the parking spot sizes are nine by eighteen, and we are showing seventy-one parking spots with uh, the minimum of twenty-four aisle, which is also the requirement, minimum requirement of, according to zoning by law. So there is only one thing that I would like highlight and bring into your attention. So there are, I, I guess fifteen row of um, and the others are just one row. They are not tandem parkings. So we are having a clear access turning in and out uh, throughout the driveway. Uh, and we are not looking to like park any, anywhere else from that, uh, from the, from the paved area. So we are not increasing the runoff, we are not increasing the payment.
So, so, so Mister O'Brien, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, just for the record, who are you in regards to, you do work at Spruhan?
Uh, yeah, sorry. My name is Peeling and I work for Sprun Engineering.
Okay.
So, so Mister O'Brien, so this is considered a minor site plan? Is that what this is considered?
Um, based on our rules and regulations, um, yes, you know, it constitutes under site plan review for an increase in parking. Um, but it doesn't constitute a full-fledged engineering review. So typically, we do a request as part of some of our larger site plan reviews, a professional review fee. Um, but being the size of this project and how our fee schedule is developed, um, this is what we would consider a, a minor site plan review. Um, it does increase eh, the parking count. Um, but it doesn't necessarily increase the parking uh, lot size um, based on this, so.
So, so, so if I could, could we ask, you know, because I, I just staying on Route eighteen and walking Route eighteen, you know, I, I have concerns about circulation, about the other use on the property, whether or not it's, it's the dumping motorcycles into the wetlands. So I, I, I mean, I, even though Mister Tansy isn't going to do a full review on this project, don't you think it would be beneficial if, and it's the will of the board, we can ask the board to have Mister Tansy visit the site? Now, look at these issues from a safety and a circulation point of view. And if, if he does determine that there is a violation with either stormwater or um, con con, we could loop them in and, and address these issues before allowing an expansion?
Uh, that's a full-fledged sentence in question, uh, Mister Chair. Um, I would say that in terms of circulation, you're primarily probably looking at the circulation for this particular site. Um, in terms of Conservation Commission in violations of that, I would attest that maybe uh, some sort of notice or letter to Conservation, if there you, there seems to be some sort of violation. Um, but I would say that that violation would come from Conservation Commission staff.
Right, but, but are you, but are you saying Mister Tansy cannot look at this plan and give us an opinion?
No, I'm saying that Mister Tansy can look at this plan. I'm just saying that if we're looking at it from a stormwater perspective, it's essentially the, the change in this plan is from the existing conditions of the amount of parking spaces that are on the existing commission, co- conditions plan to what is proposed is we should focus on the circulation of um, the on-site, um, as well as how this, how a, a vehicle would come onto the site or off the site in the operation of the business based on the plan in front of you.
Right, and I, I just think that having a technical eye look at that and and if there is a con con issue, you know, he can notify them or us and we can get a letter over to them. And if there is a better way to handle circulation or exits and entrances, you know, through striping, just because that, that, there is no curbing along that entire building for those two uses. And just why, why I was there walking it, I mean, you, you, you could get killed. I mean, there's cars pulling it out, there's motorcycles pulling in and out. There's really no rhyme or reason to en- entering or exiting that property. And then seeing how that, that north side of the property is, is um, you know, that those, those motorcycles appear to be being discarded. I think, I think it warrants having somebody with a, with a technical eye go out and visit the site and look at this and give us an opinion. That's my opinion, but I'll, I'll open it up to the board comments or questions.
Uh, can I also add one more thing?
Sure, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, thank you. Um, so you are talking about the circulation, but this is not like a public parking, you know, the only, the employee working for this um, Elite Motor is going to be using that parking lot. And the uh, parking spots in front of the building is gonna be um, the customers' parking spaces. Um, probably.
And I, and I guess just looking at that though, and I guess my question is, is the, I imagine that's going to be striped, right? And then based on, based on the proximity to Route eighteen, can a vehicle safely back out of that spot and and get turned around so they could access Route eighteen safely or or they're gonna, are they gonna, are, are they gonna be backing out onto Route eighteen?
No, there's a big amount of space to turn around and come out. Also, also, um, uh, most busy part of the road is the other side where the um, the liquor store across the street. Um, on this side, we're not really, really busy. Uh, or I've never come across a situation or any accident or any uh, safety problem. Um, there's a good enough space to turn around, come out or pull up, pull in.
Well, I mean, I just, just looking at this plan that you have in front of us, it appears that there are parking spaces right up against Route eighteen on, on the road, correct?
Right, but um, uh, where the, where the front of the building, there's a car parking. Right, but um uh where the where the front of the building, there's a car parking uh parkings for the customers. But there's a, there's, if you, if you park the car face to the building or. Uh any other way, in the back of the car, you have. Uh more than a car, another additional car, you have space to come out and turn around and come out safely.
So how many feet? How many feet? And the plan I have is an eight and a half by eleven, so I really can't scale it off. How many feet? It doesn't look like a whole parking space here. How many feet is there between the end of that parking space and Route eighteen?
I don't know, because this is not something I do. I don't have much idea about it, like the the but the numbers, I cannot tell you exact numbers. But I know there's a pretty much space.
Mr. Chair.
So Mr. Really?
Uh question my own staff first before I comment. Shane, are the motorcycle business and the car business on the same lot or these two separate lots?
There are two, there are two lots um. On this, so that you have, as you can see on the plan set here, there's map parcel six, two dash three, four and six, two dash four, eight.
So he's encroaching over onto the the second lot.
I'm a, well, I the the two buildings are on one lot, so I would say that there's some sort of agreement between the two parties and the landlord. To allow for these uses.
So Mr. Chairman, my my position would be that I have a real concern. Uh based on your observation that we're just discarding. Motor vehicle parts or parts of motor vehicles or motorcycles to the rear of the lot with disregard to the wetlands. That would be an issue for me.
Well, and I and 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 Mr. Just, I don't want to say that about the applicant.
Go down, I mean, as the conservation interim conservation agent, I would just request that. This matter be continued until Mr. Solari and I have a chance to go look at that. And that I can, you know, make a recommendation to the Conservation Commission as the interim conservation agent. And as a zoning enforcement issue, Mr. Solari can apply into whether or not. Something is going on that shouldn't go on in terms of, you know. Parts of vehicles or motorcycles or, I mean, and nothing to do with this applicant's business, but it is. I mean, he he made a statement. I don't know what he does over there. I don't care. Well, I do.
And I, and I, you know, I don't. The the land drops off and it looks like it's it's a wetland based on some of the vegetation. I'm not on the concom. Um it's an, it it appears to be an eyesore um. And there appears to be a lot going on there. And just looking at this plan. It appears that some of these parking spaces are going to be creating circulation nightmares and putting. You know, people and vehicles at danger, especially, you know, I I I'm looking at the the plan and it's not the scale, but if you. If you double that space, you're in the middle of Route eighteen. So I don't, I don't think there is enough space to safely. Back out of that spot, turn the vehicle around and safely exit that site facing forward.
Yeah, from staff's perspective, I would just ask you to continue this until we have an opportunity to look into this further.
Yeah, I think, you know, whether there's a violation or not, I don't know, but I think it would make sense to have staff visit the site and look at the entire site. Both both the motorcycle side of it and the vehicle side of it.
And just, just a point as well, and this is, uh you know, this process has been going on. Um for a while, um as Israel has stated, um Mr. Solari and I have kind of stated uh based on this project, you know. The applicant is seems to be over their current uh amount of spaces based on the existing conditions. So going through the site plan review process is is a means of the applicant and the town to alleviate. That issue as well. Um we are aware of that. There are many parking, there are many cars at that site. Um but this is a a manner for both the licensing process, the site plan review process and the zoning enforcement process. To stipulate a certain amount of parking spots to be located on a site. From a safety perspective and through the site plan review process. So in the future. Um we can better check out on properties of this nature. That increase the amount of parking spaces that they have there or in violation. To allow for proper parking spaces and proper circulation through um this planning board process.
So so just in terms of ownership of the two lots, one lot houses the building, the other lot houses the vehicle storage. Are those two lots in common ownership or different ownership?
Common ownership.
They are, so so those two lots are owned by the same person or entity. Okay. Because I know in our zoning, we have a provision that you can't use. Apostle not dedicated to the principal use for parking, but if they're owned by the same people, that would be considered merger, I would imagine, or.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. But I just think that looking at this plan, it's very difficult to read. And just looking at it and and seeing these parking spaces uh right adjacent to Route eighteen. And then having those uh five, six, it looks like five uh employee spots or customer spots. I mean, literally right on Route eighteen within feet. And and having it back out, I I just, I just think there's a lot of safety concerns here and maybe or maybe not some environmental concerns.
Just, just one more question, Mr. Chair. Is is part of this, and if if. We are looking to continue this to another meeting, is there anything here in terms of a reduction of spaces that the board would prefer? In terms of some of the safety issues?
I'd like to also have other board members comment on it. I probably talked too much, so I apologize.
Sure.
Um I'm in complete agreement with you and uh Mr. Rully. I mean, it's be checked out.
I agree, Pat. Now that we need uh Bob and uh. Take a look at it, but how many, how many parking spaces are there now?
For fifty. We have a license for fifty car and um we request them to have a license for seventy-one car.
I believe there's only thirty-one spots currently on the site, though. Is that correct?
Yeah, we request, as part of this, we requested an existing conditions plan to kind of lay out. Um what the existing conditions, they don't necessarily match, but they they talk about the striped spaces that are currently located at the site. And like I said previously, this is a a way um through site plan review um to look at striping. Um these spaces in the future and have that um. Set amount in striping uh that would properly match what would be uh there based on the uh the license amount.
Gotcha.
And I just, I think we should have Mr. Tanzi also look at the parking uh scheme because. Again, having those spaces right on the edge of Route eighteen and. Right in front of.
Excuse me, we have some pictures for existing condition, so we can.
And I I don't, I don't know who who you are.
It's magical surveyor and spoken engineering. I'm sharing the screen. Showing the plan.
Okay, well, thank you, sir. All right, so. Any more board comments?
Am I allowed to make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, Ms. Fagon.
I appreciate that Mr. Ismaili has come before the board for this proposal. There's a lot of. Unknowns right now that I agree with the board on that I'd like to see clarification. I I guess my concern is is just looking at the proposed seventy-one spots. It could just be a logistical thing, but I'm I'm not sure how you can have two rows of parking spots. Basically on top of each other. Instead of them having some space with which cars to go through and possibly, you know, move them or not move them. Because the current layout right now kind of allows that, but if you're looking at. The part of the law that said actually, you know, if you're looking at the. Proposed thing where you see the parcel ID name, you see that there are spaces basically gritted against each. I'm not sure how. How that's even supposed to work at that point. I suppose that'll be a clarification that comes to us from from Mr. Tanzi and Mr. Rully, but. For me, I'm kind of a little, I'm I'm ambivalent to how this can go, but I'm. I'd like to have more knowns and unknowns. And right now for me, if I have take a vote on it, I really don't feel like. I'm comfortable taking a vote on it.
Excuse me, can I answer your question?
Sure, I I can't see where you are, I'm sorry. Who who is speaking? I'm sorry.
Israel.
Yes, um. Row over there uh that you can see the cars parking um. Behind that row is not the uh fence or wall or something. It is. A available yard, you can just drive around and then go out. The back of their parking lot where the two row uh cars that you see is back of it is available to drive out. It is, it is not marked um in front of each other.
So M- Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Esmeili. Would that mean because that you're using, you're basically using the space word, just so I, just to help me understand it, where. Where you're saying you'd be able to move the cars is sort of where that parcel ID wording is in the picture, correct?
Don't mind me because English is my fourth language. It's, I'm not speaking perfect or understanding perfectly. So that's why, remind me, please. Um what I'm trying to tell you, there's a two-row cars parked. That that you mentioned over there, the backside of the parking, there's a dirty area, right? And it's just free eh big space. To drive the car where the where the car shows in the park, it's on top of the pavement, asphalt pavement. But um back of it is the dirt area and you can just drive out eh easy peasy.
Do you have, uh Mr. Chairman, uh just a follow-up?
Area you can see in the plot plan over there.
Do you have a, do you have a plan to eventually maybe pave that over? I I feel like having cars drive over that might be an. Issue environmentally, but I I know that's not our purview. Um but would there be at some point? Um an opportunity to pave that area over so that you?
Uh if if we, if we have to pave that area. Uh then there's gonna be additional problem. First of all, uh paving that area is gonna be super expensive that. Uh nowadays economy, I can't really uh take care of that. Other than that, if we even. Try to do that, we have to do is curing uh the drainage uh in the from the middle of the parking lot. And even if you try to do that, there's a uh the the water goes in the front uh front of the parking lot, so. Uh we are eh in this plot plan, when when I tried to request for seventy-one car, it it was not in my. Um intention to make exactly seventy-one car. This is what happened. When I asked for the plot plan from my landlord, he said he don't have one. And I hired the company, I did whatever is the process I went through. And um in that, in that uh property, we are not. Tried to make the parking space or pavement area expanded. Uh that is okay, there's a bunch of other concerns uh you you can say, but um it is just. How is the plot plan right now uh for my license? It's it's actually a big, big space, okay? You can, if you want, you can put there a hundred thirty car, but I am not interested to put that, do that, and it is also. Uh something uh I think it's against to the rules of the town. And I understand that and I respect that. It is just um. I am having hard time uh with with space. Uh I mean, it's in another space, but it's like if if I put over there fifty cars, Steve Solari visited us and he said. Uh supposed to be only fifty cars, not fifty car, fifty-one cars included in the employee or. Uh or any, any, any car cannot be more than fifty, so. Uh I understand that, I respect that, and then whatever is the right way, uh I try to uh put more car. But to do that, I'm trying to do it a legal way, right way, and whatever is the. Uh necessary way I follow that. So.
I think. Chair, I would just again ask that this be continued.
Yeah, okay. Any other, so so it is a public uh hearing, though, so before we take a. Vote to continue, is there anybody from the public here that would like to speak on this? I know we did receive some correspondence.
Yes, we have a Mark P. with his hand raised.
Hi, uh Mark Peterson, uh forty-three Church Street. I just want to point out, I I think that's in a a wellhead protection. Overlay as well, or sorry, um an aquifer protection district as well. So I don't know if if by doing all this, it sets off a cascading effect of um, you know. Obligations to to check everything, because it's right over, right above a perennial stream. It's, yeah, it's pretty much, it's it is on, it's right, you know, right, I cover pond is right, right behind it, so. I don't know if anyone's taken into account the uh the aquifer protection overlay.
Yeah, that, that's why I just, I saw there may be some violations there conservation-wise. That's why may or may not be, so. I think it's important that we have uh Mr. Tanzi and um. Mr. uh Solari and Mr. uh Rully visit the site, so. Um any other public comment at this point?
Um I don't see any virtual hands raised, nor do I see any uh people in the chat.
Do we have any um other board comments at this point or staff comments? If not, do we have more?
Yeah, we just have the upcoming meetings is uh October fourth and October eighteen.
Uh can I ask a question? I'm sorry. Run engineering. Could you please like summarize the final decisions? So if. We need to do anything else, like update the plans or show something that you would like to see on the plans? Could you please let us know, like summarize the decision? So everyone is on the same page. Sorry, because.
Well, I think, I I think that the the board doesn't meet privately, so we only meet publicly, but I think what um. You know, if staff's willing to share their findings from the 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 site visits uh with you. Um I'm sure Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Rully, uh Mr. Tanzi could put those in writing. Is that possible?
There's no decision that's been made. The decision is.
I think it's a discussion of the circulation. If there's concerns about the amount of spaces. That if the, if you were to reduce the amount of spaces for safer circulation, because you're allowed fifty, the request is seventy-one. So maybe looking at the reduction of a couple of spaces, especially some of those concerned spaces that uh Mr. Driscoll had along one oh four. Route eighteen, I apologize, Route eighteen uh on Bedford Street um. Making sure that there's some of those concerns as well as looking at pot- potentially parking stops. Um for those locations as well as showing striping um.
So I mean, I mean, Mr. O'Brien, and I'm sorry to do this, but. I'm concerned if there are wetland violations, aquifer violations, or. There's the discarding of whatever the motorcycle business is doing and that shouldn't, that's not this gentleman doing that. I mean, I don't want to perpetuate that. I want to understand what that is.
No, I understand by you, I think we can do, we can do both.
We'll get back to you, but there's no decision that's been made. The decision being made tonight is to continue this application.
And that, and and Mr. Really, that may be upland area, but it doesn't, one, it's not very attractive and from Route eighteen and two, it appears to be. Either in a buffer area or in the wetland, so. All right, um. Any other board comments at this point?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Ms. Fagon.
I do have a quick question for 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 you or uh through you to at least either Mr. Really or Mr. O'Brien. I I get that we have the proponent before us tonight. Why is it the property owner is not? I since he's, he's a at least tenant of this property. Why is the property owner not coming before us to? Provide their input and as to the proposal itself, why are they not making the proposal? On behalf of their tenant, since it's a property in common.
The property owner signed the application as well as the applicant, correct, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, we have an electronic system, so it says it was signed off on.
So Mr. uh Mrs. Miss Fagon, the um. If you don't have to own the land to come before the board, you just have to have an agreement eh eh from what I understand, and the property owner as well as the applicant. Has to sign the the application. Awesome, also, Ms. Fagon. Anybody else in the board? Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Rully, when do you think you can complete the site visits and Mr. Tanzi look at it? Are we good for the first meeting or the second meeting in October? In your opinions?
Given the agenda, I mean, just in fairness, I can't speak for everyone's schedule. I would just ask for the second meeting in October.
Do we have any other discussion from staff on that? Do we have a motion? It's October eighteenth, Mr. O'Brien?
Correct.
To to uh continue it to October eighteen.
So it's Mr. Agemian continuing with the motion, Mr. McDonald the second?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Agemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you very much.
You.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so continuing on the agenda, um item four, we have a minor modification of thirty one Perkins Street. Uh, this is a site plan, this is a minor modification of a site plan review uh that was approved on August sixteenth, twenty twenty three. Um, is there a representative of the project here with us this evening?
Good evening, uh Doug Troyer on behalf of the applicant.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so um I was reaching out, uh as you know, these, this board granted a site plan uh approval back on August twenty fourth. Uh decision uh was filed at Town Clerk's Office, and we are in the process of uh having um the site plan package uh. Signed off by the board, um we went uh basically after approval of this, uh we talked with the architectural. Uh firm to basically start putting together uh construction plans, and we realized that uh. We needed to add a one hour fire, fire rated walls to the south elevation. And the two hour fire rated walls to the north and east elevations. And then also, given that we were adding firewalls to this, uh the proposed. Uh materials, which the board wanted us to specifically identify on the elevations plan. Uh in which we provided as a demonstrative and, and, and connection with special, excuse me, site plan approval. Uh, we're keeping the same color scheme, but just changing those materials to E I F S materials, because they'll blend better. Uh with the addition of the fire rated walls to the building. Uh and then the third, uh basically, the architecture, for architectural purposes. We wanted to bring the center part of the building up to the same height as the rest of the building of forty four feet um. And I was not one hundred percent certain if this was. Uh because the elevation plan, which is the only plan that's being modified, uh it's not really part of the site plan package. Uh but because there was discussion about uh the color schemes and, and wanting to make sure that we adhere to that. Which we are uh absolutely wanting to do as well, I just wanted to bring it for the board's attention uh to determine whether or not I'm. If even a minor modification was necessary, and if so, to request a minor modification of the elevations plan. And if I can, I can, if you don't have it in front of you, I'm happy to share. Um, if Shane will let me share.
Sure, I'll allow it.
So ju- just while you're doing that, could you explain what an E I F S material is?
Yeah, I kinda had to figure it out as well, it's, it's basically, it's uh unlike a traditional stucco, the utilizes natural ingredients and mesh. It's uh, it's basically a much more energy efficient thermal cladding. Uh applied to the exterior building services and finishes with a decorative and protective fashion. It's literally, it's just a diff, given that we're adding a firewall, in order to keep the architectural and um. Aesthetics of, of the building, it's been recommended by your architect to, to basically change over to E I F S. It also blends much better with the firewall um.
Is it, is it a stucco product or is it a metal product?
Yeah, it's a, my understanding is thermal cladding, uh facade insulation applied to the exterior building surfaces. And finish with a decorative and protective seal, uh it's.
Was it, was that, was that being used on most of the building already anyway, or? Was that, is that, is that a totally new material that you're presenting?
It's a new material uh that we are uh presenting um. And if I could bring up, am I able to share?
All good.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mister Geller, you must know what this is, no?
I, I do.
Can you guys see what uh is on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so in essence, over, this is what was previously approved um. On our elevations plan, it was a vertical oriented aluminum rain screen um. With these types of materials, what we are proposing to do is keep the same color scheme. Just changing those materials to, sorry, E I F S uh materials. Uh so we're keeping the same color scheme, just changing those materials. And what I am told is that the main purpose of that is uh to basically allow for it to blend much better with the addition of the firewall. And that's really the, the main reason behind that.
So could the architect? Explain that to us, Mister Geller, is, do you understand?
So basically, the whole building is gonna be E F S now, correct?
Yes, the, the exterior portion of it, yes.
Will be E F S instead of, instead of like a, a look of on panel?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. I mean, it probably is better thermally, but, so I guess one of the best ways to describe, to describe kinda like what it looks like. If you guys, if you guys know where they just put in the new five below. That front facade is, is, is really E F S, so when they put this on the building and when they, when they. They wanna put a texture to it, it's literally looks like it's, it's snowing outside, it's like a styrofoam base.
But aesthetically, are we gonna notice, note the difference from the metal panel they proposed and the new material?
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, a metal pan, the metal panel probably will have a smoother, smoother surface than the E F S would. And I, and I know that Mister Flary was raising his hand to help try and explain, would, would you agree with that, Mister Flary?
Steve, you're muted still.
Uh, yeah, basically, is uh as Steve said, he's exactly right, it's more of a, the way E F S is done. It's a styrofoam put over the fr- over the framing, and then there's a membrane put over that. And then it's a stucco type finish, you can either, you can see it as a popcorn type some places. You see it as a, a texture like Steve said over at the um with the blow, fifty blows going uh. It's a, it's a material that i- is, is um, let's just put it this way. It doesn't take impact very well, it, it will, on the, we worry about E F S when it's low. Cause when E F S is low and it gets hit, it's, it's styrofoam, it smashes in. Um, there's no really hard surface to it, where if you're doing a metal panel or a. Structural panel or uh, you know, something of that nature would be different, but it is, it is used a lot in commercial. Uh, it's very cost effective.
And I, and I guess I'm just asking so many questions, because we're, we're trying to. Revitalize the central business district, the staff is spending a lot of time on that. And I just wanna make sure, you know, that we understand it and it's not gonna, it's, it's not gonna be a lot uglier or something than, than, than what we approved. And I'm just trying to under, better understand that.
I, I think if anything, Pat, you'll see probably uh a little bit of less seeming. As you would see panel to panel, this could blend a little bit more, they can cut. They can cut, you know, V grooves into it to accent stuff and, and, or, or square groove. Uh so you wouldn't necessarily see a seam like you would on a panel every eight feet. So this would be more of a, more, i- i- it probably over, you know, it's probably a little cleaner looking. Um. But I, you know, like, uh, uh, like Mister Sly said, you know, it, it low, it does not take well to a, a truck backing into it or hitting it and. And everything else, but a metal panel will also get crushed and dinged and you gotta take that off also, so.
Board questions or comments, I mean, I know we're, we're on this exterior, so why we're on this? Are there any board questions or comments on the exterior?
I, I, I don't know either, and I just, I just, it sounds like this is a way of saving some money. It's fine with me as long as it looks good and it holds up, but I don't, I know nothing about this, Bob may say something, he has his hand up.
I, I was just gonna ask the same thing, right, you know, how does it hold against uh like the wearing of, of our climate? You know, the weather year, eh is? Is it higher quality or lower quality? How's it going to last? You know, how long does it last before it needs to be around?
Like Mrs. Larry said, it's used, it's used all over, you know. Yeah, I, I mean, if, if you go look up, if you go down over, look by Roach Brothers, that's actually an E F S system on the building.
Mister Really, I know you're waiting to talk, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I, I would, you know, and I appreciate what everyone said, I would just say that, you know, if in fact you wanna approve this. You know, based on the concerns that Mister Shalory, Mister Geller raised, that, you know, that. Allowing them to do this, you know, with the proviso that if there is any damage to. The surface, that it be addressed in a timely manner, that we don't just let it go on and not be addressed.
But as far as. Your vision to reality and this different type of material.
It's not inconsistent, I mean, with what you had approved previously. Um, you know, I don't think a lot of people are walking up Perkins Street to, you know, look closely at this. I just wanna make sure that, again, and I appreciate what, you know, people that have deal with this is, if it does get damaged, I just don't want it to be left. Not dealt with.
All right, Mister Troyer, I, if you wanna continue, I know we talked about the firewall on the exterior, you continue to item three?
Yeah, and then item three is uh. So the, the pre, as you know, there's a pre-existing building there that is now uh approximately just over forty four feet. Uh, we went for the zoning board of appeals to basically obtain opinion. Uh that allows us to reconstruct this building uh to be no, no taller than forty four feet. In our original uh elevations plan, the center of the building was going to be approximately forty. Just around forty one feet um and then the. Measure that, so sorry. Forty three feet, I'm sorry, forty one feet uh was gonna be the middle, and then basically the. Top of the roof was gonna be forty three feet, uh we're, we're below, we're one foot below what. The zoning board appeals allowed us to basically raise and rebuild this at uh the architect. And uh putting things together and kinda getting the floor space. Saw that uh it made more sense to just raise the center part of the building as well, so that we could even out the uh. The uh, the stories as well, so basically we're looking to just move up the center portion of the building to forty three feet. To, to, to be evened up with the rest of the building uh and basically readjust the. Uh stories to, to be equal um.
Is that just be, that facade now, is there still, is, is that a recess between the two buildings?
No, it's just basically what the new one would look like would basically be this, it just wouldn't be. Just basically raising that middle part to, to, to the top, so that the whole top of the roof is level. Instead of having that little dip in the middle.
Okay. Any board comments or questions on this?
I'm good with it.
I mean, again, it's a storage building, but I, I think that middle piece dropped down a little bit aesthetically was a little bit nicer, but. That's fine, um, any other, I mean.
Quick question?
Sure, Miss Begone?
Um, what, since, but since all of the buildings' roof line would be the same uniform height, um. Would it be at a place to ask if the same type of molding that they're doing on the two main parts of the building they originally had before? Just make it consistent across the whole thing? Like with the way, the way they have the parapet at the top where would be the forty three foot line. Is there any way that they could just continue whatever molding that is across that space that they've now just raised up?
You know, that, that's a good point, it looks like in the, in the rendering below, the parapet's gone, is that correct? Well, we're looking from a top view, is, does the parapet stay? It, it stays, right? The molding on the top?
I'm not sure if the, actually, I don't think, I'm not sure if the parapet stays or not, um and unfortunately, I. I unfortunately did not have the architect on tonight uh to answer that question, I apologize um.
Well, it looks like, it looks like on that second photo, it's removed. But then, if you, if you continue down below, it looks like it stays. So I mean, I think aesthetically, Miss Begone is right, that it, it, it's inconsistent in the drawing, but it would be much more attractive if that stayed. Around the whole top of the roof.
Go back to what we had before, cause on the original one, we had a showing of a high parapet um on the original drawings. My understanding is on the revised drawings, in order to raise it up to the forty three feet. They removed the, the parapet across the top as well.
Did they remove, now, now is that glass removed in the, in the front corner as well? Because that, are we looking at the same elevation or really? You don't, you, you, so, so that top picture that I'm looking at now, is that the before and the one below, it's the after?
No, so this, what you're looking at right now is the revised, uh, cause the before is this one, this is the before.
Okay.
Where we have the space.
Yeah, yeah, I, all right.
And then basically what we have now is the raising the roof all the way up to forty three feet.
No, on that, that looks like it's still there, right, Mister Geller?
It, it does, but I see what you're saying, so the difference is if you look at the, if you look at the drawings, it almost looks like you have three different size. Parapets going across, you know, uh on the side, if you go to the very top molding along the front. If you're looking at where the, where your climate self-controlled storage is, looks like one thickness. Where you're raising, it looks like another thickness, and where on the back part, it looks like a different thickness.
Yeah.
And what's, what's the purpose of raising that?
Well, the purpose is to make, is to get even floors, to be quite honest with you, so that the storage spaces. Uh, so that the height in each, each floor basically works for what they're looking to propose. And on the original uh, on the original. Elevations prepared by Core Design, that wasn't taken into consideration, and then when they went to. Uh Tao, to basically retake a look at this and, and prepare the elevation aspect of this. Uh they, they determined that the building height needs to be forty three. Uh and they needed to basically uh level out the uh stories to make sure that what they were looking to do for storage basically worked. And in order to make the center part work as well, they need to raise, raise the center part, I believe.
So those center storage pieces, they don't, they don't wanna lose one foot of height and storage, is that it?
It doesn't work, uh, it doesn't work based on um, based on what they were ultimately looking to do, and that's the reason why. I wanted to come back and, and, and identify, even though the elevations wasn't part of the site plan review. Uh, we did discuss this, and I, I wanted to dot I's across the T's. Cause I wanted to make sure there was no issues with materials that we were changing it to, and I just wanted to bring to the board's attention the fact that. We're raising the roof, uh the center part of the roof to match up with forty three feet, and that it. Basically is in compliance with what the, the zoning board allowed us to do.
So I, so we, we could say, if we're fine with it, we could just say that the roof detail and parapet that was proposed has to remain, correct?
Well, we should say that it should match all the way around the building now.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so one of, one of the other questions that I have since where, so if, if you zoom in on that, on that. That we were looking at just now, you know, your, your main building space. So you, you see all the li- all the lines on there, I, I mean, does that indicate what used to be all the different panels put together? I'm asking that is because now that we're going with an E F S system. Um, you know, you, I, are you, are they gonna be cutting any? V grooves in it for design, are they gonna be, I'm assuming that they're gonna be cutting grooves into it, so where the, the colors change?
I think that's correct, um. Yeah. But I believe, I mean, I think what has happened is that the parapet has completely gone on the revised. And they bring the roof all the way to the top, and I believe that this is just, this, I think you're talking about these three lines right here, one, two, three. Can you see my mouse?
Well, yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm past that, I, I think we want, we, what, what, what the board is asking is that. The, the, that it matches all the way around the building. Right now, right now, you got three different applications. What I'm asking is, when you zoom up on the, on that drawing. You see lines and, and, and this isn't to scale, so let's just call it, you, you see verti, you see, you're looking at vertical lines.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's, there's, are those old indications of what the size of the panels were?
Let's go back up to, I believe that that's, that is correct. I think they basically take, I think they utilize the old drawing basically, uh which had.
Right.
Had more panels, yeah, had more panels in it, whereas the new uh, is more solid based without panels.
But if you zoom in on it, that you you see that, you see it's the same stuff.
Yes, I do. I do see that. And I can't answer the question as to whether or not they're going to be cutting this EFIS materials to be in these sized panels or not.
Well, I I I would almost ask if they wouldn't be, because I would, I wouldn't want to see that that much in an EFS.
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah. I I don't believe that that is the case.
Yeah, I I I would agree. I think, you know, if we're trying to enhance downtown, even though it's just a a self-storage building, if we could that roof detail will make a big difference, you know, on that project, you know. What is that roof detail, Steve? Is that Mr. Geller, is that like crown, like 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 big crown molding up top?
Yeah, I mean, it's an EFS system. They can build it up. There's many different types of details that they can, that they can make. I I mean, there's just so many that are out there that that can be built up and then it's it's cut and shaped and 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 painted. Um.
Okay.
So I I I mean, I guess I'm, I I'm fine with what they're doing. I I'm fine with the materials. I I think I I guess I'd just like to really see what a, what it looks like. Steve?
I don't know why, uh, why isn't the board just asked for design detail?
That, yeah.
They they're gonna build this building, they have to have a a detail that's gonna be turned into the building department on how they're doing this EFS system. I wanted to see why they couldn't get that to you for your decision.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, Mr. Troyer, you know, coming unprotected here, but I mean, I mean, it's, no offense to him, but I I I I would like to see some more information in detail.
Right.
I mean, the the playboard is good allowing this to go forward. Now, after the fact, we've allowed it to go forward. Now we're tweaking it. I mean, I don't want to be in this situation after the fact that, and we've agreed to go to the prom, but now I may may not be able to drive you there.
Yeah, no. No, I understand. Um, and I guess the, you know, the issue for me was more along the lines that this is not actually impacting or changing any of the approved site plans or anything. This wasn't even part of the site plan.
You know, I I I think that.
With that said, but with with that said, uh, if if you would like me to provide a more detailed uh, rendering, uh, it sounds like you may be looking for a rendering to basically show exactly um, what this looks like or a much more defined elevation plan that 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 shows uh, that that corrects any and all errors that may be identified in this one at this point for further hearing. I'm I'm happy to basically provide that.
Yeah, I think I think like Mr. Solari said, we're looking for the EFS details. We're looking at the details of how you're gonna put the parapet in the roof and and what you plan on. You know, what type, but how are you gonna change the colors? You know, is there a detail where you're going from one color to another?
And I think that may be part of the disconnect, uh, Mr. Troyer, that that this part of the site planner review in our town is the architect's.
Yeah.
So we we do ask for elevations, we do ask for the plans and the colors and whatnot. So that was part of the site planner review?
Yeah. Yeah, and this is uh, this is one of the main reasons I want to come back to you is to to make a determination as to whether or not uh, there was more information in which you needed in order to make this decision, and I'm happy to do that. Uh, my mistake in not having the architect with me tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say from the town's perspective, Mr. Troyer, we we appreciate your honesty in terms of coming back to us and wanting to do the right thing and commend you and your clients for doing that. Um, so I mean, kudos to you all for doing what you're doing. And but now that you came into the dance.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we, uh, I will basically provide more details on the EFS designs, uh, identify what's gonna happen with the the parapet on the top and provide a little bit more details, uh, submit that uh, prior to the next hearing. I would love to try and get before uh, one of these two-hour sessions if possible, uh, to 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 basically get back before the board. Uh, but um, uh, absolutely understand and I appreciate the board's comments.
And and maybe we can um, do you think you could have this wrapped up by a by a first meeting in October?
Yeah. Yeah.
And we could ma- maybe Mr. O'Brien put it on as the, one of the first items.
Sure.
So, so so just Mr. O'Brien, and I don't know how you want to handle this, but typically as the board, we discuss if we're gonna accept this as a minor or a major modification. Just so the applicant knows where we stand. I I don't want to take a vote on it because that's, we're accepting it, but are we in agreement as a board that this is a minor modification? Is that, and is that how we want to move forward?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Any other board comments on that?
I'll agree.
No.
I just wish we had talked, or we had discussed this originally when we uh, moved it.
All right, so we'll, so we'll continue to handle this as a minor modification, but we're not gonna vote, take action on it until we see accurate renderings, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay. All right, so Mr. O'Brien, the first meeting in October is October what?
Fourth.
And we'll try to get um, well, if Mr. Troy doesn't have to wait two hours, it's two hours, he can't bill the client, though.
Yeah.
It's in the minutes.
This is one of those that uh, yeah, if we, I I appreciate any courtesy uh, the board can provide.
Okay, yes, and if you could get those to uh, Mr. O'Brien in advance, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sure to do that ASAP.
All right, so do we have a motion to move this to October? Did you say fourth, Mr. O'Brien?
Correct.
Fourth at uh, six-thirty PM?
Yes.
By Mr. Agemian, do we have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Geller, any discussion? And this is not a public hearing, so we don't have public comment, okay? Um, Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Agemian?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Um, um, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Sorry, Mr. McDonald, I almost forgot you.
No worries.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Troyer.
Thank you for your time. Hope you all have a good evening.
Okay, moving on, item five, uh, other business, we have April, uh, excuse me, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes to be approved. Do we have, has everybody read them? Are we comfortable voting on them? Do we have a motion?
Next meeting, it's my go over them again.
Do, continue those to the next meeting? Okay. Um, Mr. Rully, your workshop on September twenty-sixth?
Now, my workshop, it's the town's workshop, uh, you know, with respect to vision, reality. Um, you're all invited. Uh, the public's invited, and I think we're gonna probably have over a hundred people in attendance, so um, but it's not my workshop.
Okay. Um, what items to the next meeting, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, as you can tell, uh, we got um, the minor modification for thirty-one Perkins Street. Um, we have the bond information uh, from South Farm. Uh, we'll have um, Broad Street back before us as well as a another minor modification for a property over at five hundred Elm Street.
When you say Broad Street, is that the Perkins property, Mr. O'Brien?
That is, that is correct. Oh, that's all I have. Until next time.
Okay. Any uh, board or committee reports? Any additional planner reports other than what you already gave, Mr. O'Brien?
No.
Mr. Really? Um, item six, motion to adjourn?
Wow. That's adjourned.
Motion by Mr. Mr. Agemian, do a second?
A second.
Mr. McDonald? I always ask of this discussion, but hopefully there's none, right?
Not for not for adjournment.
Mr. Agemian?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yeah.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.